I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order, it's 4:32. Thank you all for joining us once again. As I said earlier, I hope you all have dry basements, but I'm not so lucky in that order. You could fish for trout in my basement. Stacy, you're shaking your head. I know, it's not pretty. Woo, so, alright, well, our first item on the agenda this evening is item A. This is on page one, and that recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept with gratitude the Cedar Valley United Way grant in the amount of $28,472.50 to benefit the We Believe Summer Academy. Thanks Jessie and India, or India and Jessie. And discussion, I know we have Ms. Gina on the line with us, and I think Jen Hartman, I've got you here too. So if you guys want to give us a little background on this, and then we will vote to accept it.
Yep, so, very clear to the Dollar General grant. This grant was applied for and secured to offset the district in-kind costs for summer learning opportunities for our kiddos. So, really grateful for...
Pam, you're not muted.
So yeah, it would offset those costs for what will be the Jump Start Academy this year.
Excellent. Jen, do you have anything you want to add?
Pam, Lyle's on now. I didn't know if he saw that, okay.
And Gina, if you don't mind, I'm also gonna say that I recently saw that you've also been awarded another $5,000 grant from the, I think it came from the, through the Waterloo Schools Foundation, et cetera. Is that correct?
Correct. We applied with Waterloo Schools Foundation to community foundation, which will also be applied to the We Believe Summer Learning Academy as well.
Excellent. And Gina, can I ask you briefly? Because I know we talked about this when we met a few times ago. Tell me how students are identified for the We Believe program.
Yep, so this year will be completely different. First, our first round of recruitment will go with those kids who have not been engaged. And so far, we did send out that survey last week. And so far, as of today, we had 90 kids registered of those kids that were completely disengaged in virtual learning from March. Then from there, we will revisit the kids that formerly registered to be a part of this year's We Believe Academy. And those kids are the kiddos who are dubbed our Bubble Students that are just at proficiency or almost at proficiency. And those students that we've seen that were able to get our greatest level of impact through summer learning.
Excellent. That's great to hear that 90 have already signed up. And I think I recall that the capacity is up over, like it's close to 350, like 340, is that correct?
450.
400, yes.
Yep.
How many that were disengaged?
Yeah.
Um, I don't have that exact number, but I believe what was stated to me was it was a range of between 50 and 100 kids from each elementary building. And Dr. Mohorn may be able to chime in.
That's, that's accurate. Sorry, this is Jen.
Yep.
Until recently, I was having trouble with that. But yes, we range from kids not participating at the low end, like around 22 per building, at a building, all the way up to 140 at a building and at the elementary level. So those are the kids that we're currently targeting right now. We're really wanting to get out more information. We sent out registrations in every language, and we are not getting any registrations back from the students. And so we're going to ask our interpreters to start calling those families personally.
So that 90 is still only 10% of the disengaged?
It is. Yes, that's correct.
So go ahead, Stacy, I'm sorry.
What, what's gonna happen to those kids then that don't do the program when it's time for school to start? What, what are we gonna do with them?
Well, and we're gonna, between now and in the next couple of weeks, needing to reach out to all the others that are not responding to our request to register. And obviously, those are the kids that we have to target because we don't know if they've done anything. We don't have any record of them participating. And so it will be very telling when school starts, when we give our first assessments, our, kind of our dipstick to find out where kids are at. That's our concern. And so we're going to try to do everything we can between now and the next three weeks to get those kids signed up.
Thank you, and good job Gina in getting all the grants lined up. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Now, are you fully funded now, or are you still seeking more money?
Now, according... Funding to cover our costs.
Repeat that one more time. You're frozen, repeat that.
Oh, sorry. This will be the first year where we secured enough funding to cover the costs where we won't have to rely on the district for in-kind funding.
Excellent, excellent.
Awesome. Alright, does anybody else have anything for...
Shannon, can I jump in for like 30 seconds?
Sure, go ahead Steph.
And just talk about, since we're talking about our Jump Start, I just want to talk a little bit, just a tiny bit about, we are gonna have other opportunities for kids who don't attend our Jump Start. We are gonna do everything we can, including probably, almost 100% likely that we're gonna be knocking on doors. What we're doing, sending letters, calling, email, Blackboard Connect, all of them, that's not working. We just have to, it's a last resort, but we just know that we have to, we have to start knocking on doors. So that's something we're going to do. But we still know we're not gonna get to everybody. So we have already talked about putting plans in place where we have extended learning days for targeted groups of kids. So some of you might know it's like after-school club, or homework club, or different things like that. But we target kids who really need that bump and need that extra instruction. And so that's our, the plans for that is already in the works. So I just wanted to make sure. Of course, we really want them to attend Jump Start, but if they can't, we still also have plans in place for when they come through our doors, because we're taking them. When they show up, we're taking, we're taking everybody where they're at.
Could mandatory study table be used for kids that are in sports, well, that didn't engage?
I, I say we try it. I don't know why not. I don't know why not.
Super, thank you Steph, that's great.
We're gonna provide busing for the after-school program?
Yes, we always provide busing.
Alright, are we, are we set board yet? Just do you have more questions?
Just one more, I'll say the point about the scene. Any of the funds that you received Gina, go to busing? I feel like during the conversation, like first year that you would need the program, we're trying to secure or busing, or busing was the issue. So, any of the money going to busing this year?
Yep, um, busing was actually budgeted in those numbers as well. As long as Durham is able to provide busing, we do have the funds secured to provide busing.
Is it something that we could possibly look at, like maybe being, was it a resource as using a van from Boys and Girls Club one year, or vans, or no? Am I mistaken?
Nope, we did. We, we've talked about that as an option as well because we have a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club site. But the, the hard part about that is with the sites that are non-Boys and Girls Club sites are larger. So we have a lot more kids that we serve at those buildings that it would take a long time for them to run vans back and forth from the buildings.
Is the virtual option still the number one option? Or we, we talk about busing, are we trying to have it at the site?
Nope, currently, we're actually planning for both, to run both ways. So to run both virtually and in person. And Dr. Mohorn, you wanna chime in?
Yep, that's why I might, our preference, of course, is to do in person. That's our absolute preference, is to do that first of all. But we know the reality is, we may not be able to do that, or we may only be certain capacity. So we have plans for both, just in case we can't do. Again, it's a hybrid, just like we'll have to do in the fall to see what we can do and how we can meet kids' needs. But our preference is really be able to be face-to-face with these kids that we, most of them we haven't seen or heard from since March.
Which would make virtual learning more difficult because they already had a trouble, had trouble doing virtual learning in the first place.
Exactly, yep. And that's why we're really hoping that we can do face-to-face, really hoping.
I'm assuming as a district, that will be a really good test drive as far as Durham buses, just to see how it's gonna look in the fall, trying to get kids busing and social distancing and things of that nature.
You're exactly correct, India. This will be our test run for everything, really. The cleaning schedule, the bathrooms, the busing, the everything. This will kind of be our first blush at what that's gonna look like.
Alright. Board, you ready? All those in favor then of approving the recommended motion to accept the Cedar Valley United Way grant for the We Believe Summer Academy? Please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. And chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you all. Thanks Gina, thanks Jen, and Steph. The next item on our agenda then is item B. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of Chromebooks and cards as outlined, at a total cost of $511,050.
So moved.
Thank you Stacy, and a second?
Second.
Thanks Jessie. And discussion, I know we've got Matt O'Brien here, who can get through some of the details. And perhaps, I don't know, Dr. Lindeman, do you want to lead this off, or would you rather have Matt start?
I'm actually going to turn it over to Matt, and I'm gonna back clean up on this one.
Awesome. Alright, Mr. O'Brien, the floor is yours, or the Zoom is yours, or the Google is yours, go for it.
Sounds, sounds good. I'll just give a brief background, and then I think I have double backup with both Dr. Lindeman and Dr. Mohorn, so I'm sure we're covered. So I'm sure the board is aware, we have a one-to-one program for secondary students where each of our middle and high school students are issued a Chromebook. Our elementary students have obviously had access to technology in the past, but not necessarily on a one-to-one basis. I think it's safe to say that there are several areas which COVID-19 has probably changed forever, and technology is undoubtedly one of those areas. So as we've been having conversations about what our needs will be next year, it became clear that it would be advantageous to expand our one-to-one program to the elementary level. So what I wanna highlight there is I kind of mentioned change forever. And the conversations that we've had is that this, this kind of expansion, which I'll touch on a little bit, because there's some caveats compared to what we've been doing at our secondary schools. But this expansion is, is really something that we think makes sense for COVID-19 and the uncertainty of next year, and obviously the hybrid approach of potentially both some in-person and virtual learning. But we also believe that this is the right decision for our students moving forward as well. So this really is both for the next year, as well as for kind of the time period. So the proposal allows us to give grades 1 through 5 access to Chromebooks. So what we're doing is buying enough Chromebooks to then go with the usable Chromebooks that we already have at the elementary level to get us up to that one-to-one level. So that's why the proposal is for 2000. We obviously have more than that in terms of students and grades 1 through 5. But, but, sorry, slightly distracted by... Stacy, Jane, do you wanna move your mic? There's a little feedback coming through. Thank you so much. Thanks Pam. So this, this will allow us with the Chromebooks that are part of the proposal in front of you that will, that will allow us to add to what we already have and give students, or loan to students in grades 1 through 5 Chromebooks for their use. Similarly, with cards, so this proposal is kind of two parts. It has a proposal for Chromebooks, also has a proposal for cards. That's not something that the board has really seen before, but that's one of the caveats that we're looking at at the elementary level. Knowing that in a lot of cases, it probably, long-term, is not gonna make sense for students at the elementary level to be transporting their Chromebook home every night. So we are planning on buying cards for every classroom. So in a lot of cases, the Chromebooks will be staying in our schools. Though certainly with COVID, this actually gives us quite a bit of flexibility in terms of having enough devices available for students to take home. Or if we know that there's a closure or something else coming, then we'll have that flexibility as well. But the cards are part of the proposal. And again, we're not buying enough for every classroom. We're basically looking at what we already had in terms of usable cards because we do already have, I think 50 or so that will be usable. So then we're basically adding enough so that every roster classroom will have a card as well. So that's the proposal before you. I guess maybe the one other notable thing to mention is that we keep same grades 1 through 5. That's what's before you tonight. And the reason that's before you tonight is because we felt like we needed to get this, I felt like we needed to get this before you, just to make this happen or have a chance of making this happen this summer. We've seen some substantial availability issues with Chromebooks. In fact, that's why we're actually going with a different model than we, the board previously approved for our purchase just because of availability issues with the model that we had been buying and that we did buy for our secondary students. So we really wanted to make sure that we got this order in so that we're actually hopefully able to receive these and get them deployed and hopefully ready to start the school year. So that's why the proposal is, I don't wanna say incomplete, but we're concentrating on grades 1 through 5 because that's really what it was evident that we were ready to move forward with. We certainly are not leaving out conversations about technology access for pre-K and kindergarten. We're just not ready to bring that proposal, or any proposals regarding technology before you just because we still need to have some conversations in those areas. So apologize, I got slightly off-track there for a second. But Dr. Lindeman or Dr. Mohorn, you can certainly chime in with anything else you think should be added?
Hey Matt, do we need GoGuardian on these, or do we already have that?
So that's, that's actually a great question Stacy. We will actually make sure that we, we will be buying some additional licenses for GoGuardian because we're gonna wanna make sure that all of these devices have both the filtering component, sensors, and maybe leave in the building in a lot of cases, and we wanna make sure they're filtered at home as well as the classroom management component. That's not part of the proposal in front of you. Quite honestly, I was mainly concentrating on giving the hardware just because software is a lot easier to, to purchase. You know, there's, there's not necessarily a backorder of software. And with hardware, there's a backorder. So that's why we wanted to get this in front of you as soon as possible, once that kind of decision is made. But yes, we will be looking at licenses for these devices for GoGuardian. That's a great question.
Matt, is the license fee annual, or over a period of years?
The Chromebook license fee, the management license, Lyle, that's part of the proposal, or GoGuardian? Which were you referring to?
The proposal, the $24.
Yep, yep. So that is a one-time fee. Google actually does that as a one-time fee for education. For enterprise, it's a recurring, but for us, it's a one-time fee for the life of the device. So that's why most times that we buy devices, we buy the licenses with them because they match up and it's the life of the device.
For the lifetime of the device?
Of, yeah, of that specific Chromebook, yep.
Typically, in the past, this will be the summer of collecting and managing and getting computers updated for a lot of the kiddos. I know we're getting new ones for the 1th grade, but where is the, where can be done with those who've had their computers or laptops all since March? So like my student who had, she's in middle school, when will those updates happen? And when, and keep in mind, those computers that don't get returned, or they're very, very damaged, will we come back and to hold on additional laptops for those ones that get lost at sea?
Yeah, so the, good questions. At the second, this is obviously mainly a concern at the secondary level. We've had, we do have some elementary Chromebooks which are still out for various reasons. But this is obviously mainly a concern at the secondary level. So we actually have two of our grades at the secondary level that are gonna be due for replacements. We obviously already collected senior Chromebooks. There's still a handful that the schools are working to collect, but the vast majority of those got collected. Those were only one-year-old, so those are actually gonna be filtering back into our secondary student population and actually go to incoming 10th graders. So incoming 10th graders will turn in their device and be issued one of the senior Chromebooks. Obviously, any repairs or damage, we're taking care of that over the summer. So it'll all be repaired by the time it's issued to a new student. 9th graders are also receiving new Chromebooks. And then obviously 6th graders, incoming 6th graders are as well. So basically 6th, 9th, and 10th will be issued. Those at the start of the school year. 6th grade, they haven't been issued anything yet, so that'll obviously be a new issue to them. And 9th and 10th, the process will be that they turn in their old one, their four-year-old one, and then they are issued a new one at that point. In terms of, of damage and, and loss, which you kind of hit on, obviously, our, we and our schools work quite a bit to try to repooop that. Students before, they're actually allowed to check out a Chromebook and take it home. Actually, they've signed an agreement saying they're liable for costs, so we do bill back those damages or losses. We certainly always though keep a pool of loaner or state of Chromebooks. So for those that we don't necessarily get back right away, we will certainly have a pool of spares that we check out. And that's just kind of our standard process even for just repairs because you know, it's just not efficient for us to repair every broken Chromebook like the same day it's turned in. So we just kind of have a recurring buffer of additional Chromebooks. We always buy above what the enrollment actually is so that each school has a card of spares that they can check out to new students or if a Chromebook is, is damaged or lost, or, or needs repaired or whatnot.
So are you still, you know, we talked about this quite a while ago when we were getting the Chromebook approval for the other grades, the, replacing the four-year-old ones. Are we, and you said then that you were going to be disposing of the four-year-old ones. Is there any way then that we can still use those, since we, like K through, or pre-K and K, just something that we can have, or distribute those? Because there's a time when families need to have that technology within the home as well?
Yeah, so a couple of things there.
Well, I think he froze up.
I think, okay, yeah. So one of us, Jane, could jump in, because it kind of works perfectly since he's frozen.
It does. Stacy, that's a good question. We had a lot of conversation about that. And first of all, as Dr. Mohorn will tell you, there is really the appropriateness of the device for our littlest learners. Chromebooks really only work when the kids can spell. And, you know, so there, I mean, there are some apps that are on there, but for the, for other pieces, it really, a tablet might be a more appropriate device. So we're looking at that right now, trying to determine. So please think of this as kind of part one of our technology response. And then Matt, I think if he comes back on, oh, it looks like he's back on. He, he did talk with us about the possibility of, he, matter of fact, even used the analogy of taking two Chromebooks and actually taking working parts off of both of them and making one. So there are, and now it's time-consuming, but we did talk about how to, how to do that to make this go as far as possible, so.
Am I unfrozen now? I'm sorry about that.
You are.
Ironically, the video kept going on my end, so I could hear you saying that I was frozen, like, oh crud. So yeah, I think Dr. Lindeman and Dr. Mohorn covered that well. One of our concerns around, so really, there's two pieces. The answer is a yes, but in terms of whether or not those can be used. One is, is like was being said, whether or not that's the appropriate device for those students. The second is just, quite honestly, knowing that we're not gonna get those back in most cases until the start of the school year. We're, we're just not gonna have time to do like Dr. Lindeman described. That's really what we will end up doing to make those still be usable, is, is kind of a little Dr. Frankenstein, where you know, if two come back damaged, we can kind of combine them into one working one. The reality is, is the beginning of the school year is always a crazy time for tech staff. Let alone this year, which we're anticipating is gonna be lots of fun just because staff and students have been away for so long. So we just know that we wouldn't have time to do that right away. We do have plans for those devices though. One of the things that we're actually just looking at is what else is needed in some of our classrooms? If teachers are gonna be doing some maybe additional recordings or things of that nature. So we've actually got a couple of possibilities that might work out really well with those devices because they're potentially shorter-term usage. So what we wanted to do with the proposal in front of you is because we knew that this was something that we, was kind of our, our standard operating procedure, kind of our new model moving forward. We wanted to actually invest enough to make this last and not just buy the bare minimum at this point. So that's why the proposal is before you is for enough Chromebooks that we don't have to use those particular ones through 1th, first through 5th grade, which is one of the things that we talked about. But there are some other uses in our classrooms, like as a secondary device, maybe just for the COVID era, for our teachers, or things of that nature that are of a more temporary nature, that we are talking about, that we very, very well likely will continue to use those devices. So we do have some uses in mind, we just haven't finalized those yet. But that's why it's not included in the first or fifth proposal.
And, I mean, I wasn't talking about the broken ones, just the ones that were four-years-old and that you're retiring. Because you said the license goes, the lifetime of the device. So they, therefore, they're licensed forever, correct? As long as you're using it?
Well, so that's actually an interesting topic because lifetime of the device means really two things. It's kind of what you hit on, which is how long does the device actually stay alive for, basically? You know, before it just doesn't work any longer. But there is actually an end-of-life or a lifetime kind of publication that each manufacturer does, regardless of whether we're talking about Chromebooks, or iPads, or whatever, that basically says, after this point, the manufacturer is no longer gonna release security updates for that. So like iPads and iPhones are the same thing, Android phones are kind of the same thing, and Chromebooks as well. So every Chromebook model has kind of an end-of-life. So even if it, the device is still working, it does reach a point, which a lot of those devices do have one year left, which is why we were looking at using those maybe for some secondary purposes in our classrooms. But it's, it's not an infinite thing because once it hits that end-of-life, A, it stops getting security updates, and then B, it drops off what's called the management console, which is how we can actually manage the devices and put out settings and all of that good stuff.
So what's the end-of-life on these?
So the Chromebooks that are before you right now are the summer of 2026, is the published end-of-life. So it actually is, because they're newer devices, it would actually be about six years, slightly under six years. But again, there's kind of two factors at the end-of-life. One is how long does the device actually last itself? And two, it's kind of that published end-of-life when it stops getting updates and stops getting support.
So in rough numbers, can we, can we provide Chromebooks, or iPads, or whatever it is, to students for a hundred dollars a year? A million bucks for, for the student, not the teacher, not the administration work that you do, but just the student side, does a million dollars catch that, or? but just the student side, does a million dollars catch that or not?
For, yeah, for, it would actually be, I think, under, it would be under that Lyle, so you're talking a million dollars for grades, like basically K through twelve? Yes, um, because really what we're looking at is, you know, the, so if you do the math, the the Chromebook with the license fee, these we actually got a heck of a deal on, but you know, figure around two hundred and thirty to two hundred and forty dollars um, per device. Um, then if you take that over, we get, you know, between a a three to four year lifespan out of them. So you know, if you do say two forty divided by three point five, that's, you know, sixty eight dollars and some cents, sixty nine dollars, that type of thing. So yes, if you're multiplying that out, we could now, keep in mind, one, we buy more um, devices than actual students. The actual cost per student is a little higher um, than that amount, just because of that buffer that I talked about earlier. Um, two, that would be if we were going Chromebooks across the board. Um, like I said, we're still having conversations on what that should look like for littlest learners and and we're just not ready to bring that before you at this point. But Chromebooks are about the cheapest device, um, at least kind of manageable device that we can bring before you. Um, it may be that the recommendation for um, our littlest learners at pre K and K is a little bit more of an expensive device, so obviously that cost would be a little bit more for them.
But by the time you add the repair and the software and uh, um, software troubleshooting and stuff, it's a hundred bucks a year.
Yeah, roughly, I would say just just shy of a hundred dollars by the time then you add um, you know, the Go Guardian recurring and then the buffer amounts and those pieces, yes, I would say that's fair.
And I don't mean to keep harping on this, Matt, but and we, and you had explained this before about the no security updates and all that with the ones that you're retiring. When the school district decides to dispose of them, because that was something we talked about several months ago. I have an iPad that is so old, it hasn't had updates for probably three years. It works fine. Um, my phone is the same way. If those, those can't be used in the schools because they can't update. But what would be the reasoning that we couldn't give them to the community? And we talked about it before, but there's been a a real shift in what the need is in the community.
Yeah, so I think you hit it that we or most districts, organizations, anyone with like an enterprise network that has to actually safeguard information, um, wouldn't want those on our network. Um, that's not to say that they don't, like you said, still technically work. Um, I did, Stacy, have a brief conversation with our attorney the last time this got brought up. And the the gist of it is, is the the there's a difference of whether we were actually wanting to sell them at a profit or whether we were actually wanting to give them away. Um, we certainly have the option to sell them, um, that would require, we can't, it's not really feasible for us to sell to individuals. So that's why in the past we've done um, things like some of our technology has gone to auction um, with other district surplus type stuff, just because it's much easier to do it in batch, because it does take a couple of board actions, it takes a public hearing, those type of things. So that's one option. Um, our attorney was a a little less straightforward and said he was going to need to do some more research. Um, if obviously research at at billable hours, um, if if in regards to kind of the legal pieces around actually giving those devices away. So that's something honestly I was looking into, and then COVID happened, and that was kind of the conversation I had with him. Um, and it kind of got dropped from there. I do want to, because we, this is coming up in the context, though, of the Chromebooks that our secondary students are going to be turning in. I just want to highlight again that we we have probably a a plan or some use in mind for probably the vast majority of those. So we're not going to have a large number of those. Um, and part of that unknown is not knowing for sure what condition those are going to come back in. Uh, again, knowing that a as was said earlier, that they've been away at home for six months. So um, we're, before we make any, we're we're making kind of some guesses of how that need is going to align with what we get back. But before we even say where we're going to have a lot of those devices available, we kind of need to let that play out and see what those look like when they actually come back to us.
Kind of hear a lull, a lull in the conversation, so I just would like to just make some summary comments. And um, not only for the board, but also I know that this um, videotaping will make its way into the media's hands. And so I just, I would like to just make some summary comments for them too. So um, we knew as we worked through our return to learn plan, regardless of the path of COVID, we knew that learning was going to need to continue. When it happened this spring, the reason they gave districts an opportunity to, or the option of going virtual, uh, going required or voluntary is because we just simply, not all districts were ready. And um, and and just didn't have all of the Ts crossed and the I's dotted to meet the legal requirements. And and that just can't happen this this fall. I mean, we're just, it's going to be required continuous learning and we will be ready. So um, as the teams worked and and as you know, we have a hundred plus people working in the six return to learn committees. And they're working very hard, including we have community members, they're business owners, parents. And it's, you know, so it's very, very evident that technology access was a big part of the learning plan, but also a big part of the equity plan. And so we believe that this this purchase, if, you know, hopefully will be approved tonight, this purchase will really help us um, for in a variety of ways. First of all, we think that our our classroom structure, the physical structure where desks are, how our rooms look will have to be different this fall. You know, we've always, Dr. Mohorn will tell you, we have always encouraged and applauded and recognized and celebrated flexible seating in the classrooms, you know. There, um, we've had K W W all come out and videotape different uh, classrooms when they do some really innovative things. That can't happen this fall. We need to go back to a little bit more straightforward room arrangement. So with that, uh, we needed to come up with a different way for our groups, our kids to still collaborate and work together. And we believe a technology option still allows for some teamwork, to do some chat, chatting back and forth and that kind of thing. It also allows for teachers to give feedback without having to walk and stand right next to the person. You know, there's just a lot of options going forward. So that's, you know, great for classroom management for all students who are sitting in our rooms this fall. Um, we also not all, we also know, not all students will be back in our classrooms this fall. We've, you know, we have some students who are going to need a virtual option and we are ready for that. So this is, I know that's a second reading, a second reason this is really important. Um, we think for students who are absent for any reason, you get a cold, you sprain your ankle, whatever, this gives us options for kids who are absent. Um, should there be any school closings in the fall? Doing this order now gives us a chance to meet with our kids, practice, get them ready. Um, it's part of the reason where some of our elementary students struggle, because we had, you know, if they hadn't used them before, hadn't used them a lot, we had some login issues and that kind of thing. So our job is to come out of the gate and and Stephanie's teams in the academic standards, they are working really hard to make sure out, right out of the gate, we are ready to go with that. And then, you know, there are some things coming up, you know, we we live in Iowa and we have snow days. And we think that, you know, this would, there there might be some options coming down legislatively that would allow us to continue learning even on snow days. Of course, I can't choreograph to anybody who's watching this that that's going to happen. But if it does, that's one more advantage of doing this. So um, and and we do apologize for doing a special board meeting. We wish that this would have been ready. We had just had a special board meeting last Thursday, but things are happening so quickly. We just simply were not quite ready. We were so close, but just not ready. Matt will tell you that um, by the time this recommendation came to him, he, you know, he's, he has a full head of hair, so he hasn't completely pulled out his hair. But we've been taxing our technology people really hard. Um, not only Matt, from the leadership standpoint, but his techs and, you know, everybody working in his department. And they really turned this around, this proposal, in about seventy two hours, ninety six hours tops. And so um, bringing it to you right now just gives us some options to get it. You know, he describes and he said it before, that every day you wait is not just one day later. It's you just get further and further behind. And so, you know, you could order, you know, if we ordered tomorrow instead of today, we might be, you know, three people might have gotten in line before us. So um, and that's just kind of my summary comments. We believe that this absolutely is um, is important for for instruction, for equity and for uh, required instruction. So thank you for considering the proposal.
Thank you, Jane, and thank you, Matt, for that. I know we we always kind of get up when we start talking about technology. I know we take you into the weeds, which I appreciate all of your um, the detail that you provide us. Thank you for that. So is there anything else from the board?
What's the expected delivery on these?
So I'm told as of negotiation from last week, that we should be able to get these in about four weeks. So our hope is that then we can um, get rocking and rolling and get them prepped and and ready to go for for the start of school. Okay, thank you.
And I just want to say, I think this is a great thing for Waterloo schools and our families and our kids. Um, you know, we we've, I've heard some conversations about one to one initiatives and the expansion of those. But I think, you know, the fact that we're moving forward so quickly, it's it's the right thing for kids. And so I'm I'm really proud that we are moving this forward. I think it's exactly the right thing to do, and I think this is a very good vote and a good thing for for Waterloo schools.
And Jane, I would echo that the comment that you made. One thing that immediately came to my mind in our equity piece is it was difficult for some of our students who had never had a computer, even though we offered them during, you know, the initial from March to June, we had families come pick them up. But if students hadn't had that engagement already with a computer and were trying to log on and do all of that, I think this is really going to take us to that next level. And I think you're absolutely right, that the the way in which education is delivered is will forever be changed now. And and so this is an opportunity that we have to really get to that next step. And unfortunately, it took COVID to get us there, but that, but this is going to be great for all of our families. So I think.
Just qualify for the federal funds money.
For CARES money?
Yeah.
It sure does, absolutely. And so we will use to pay for this, um, the CARES dollars will use to support it. And I can't, you know, I can't always tell you exactly which dollar will be going where, but um, the CARES dollars, there were, you know, there were some um, some savings from not being in school this spring. Of course, we had some additional expenses, but we also had some savings. And so there's some money that can be, sometimes it's a little bit of a shell game. If you're not going to pay for this, maybe you're going to pay for this. And so um, and then, you know, there's some flexibility and some grants that we had. I mean, there's, there's definitely money there to do this, and so it's the right thing to do um, to do right now. So um, I don't think if we, you know, we, I I I wouldn't wish COVID thing to ever, ever, ever happen ever again. But th- there are some things that we're going to try to do the best we can to take advantage of any opportunity. And I suppose, I even hate using the word opportunity and COVID in the same sentence, because it doesn't, it's awful. But, you know, we're, the money is there, and so we're going to do it and and because it's the right thing to do, and it's going to be good for kids.
So wait, hold on a minute, um, and you mentioned that all the support, it's great to have these new computers. Um, one complaint a lot of parents had with the computers have been support on their end. Um, they had really struggled trying to even understand being on the computer or, you know, the technology part of it for the parent part, not just for the student part. So, you know, we buy these new computers, it's great to have, but how are we supporting the parents and be able to actually support their child at home to have this too?
Yeah, I I think that that's a great point, and we've gotten some of that feedback as well. I think I would say the support has been maybe inconsistent. I know a lot, quite a few parents were able to get just even one on one support, either through their teacher or through a help desk or things of that nature. But obviously, that's not sustainable for all of our parents. So um, we are going to be looking at, Ron Moreland, who did a lot of PD for our our teachers, um, trying to make some video resources that are available for our parents to be able to watch as well. So that's actually on the summer to do list is um, trying to come up with some video um, resources that our parents can watch to to get um, just an idea of of what their students' experience are and how they can help with that. So that's absolutely a a good point and something we've been talking about.
Yeah, and that being, I was going to say, that being said, having this be part of the the kids' everyday life, they have their Chrome, they have their Chromebook at their, is definitely going to take us a step forward, because as as an older parent, right? I I'm telling you, if you are, if my kids are at the mercy of me supporting their technology needs, we are all in trouble. So the best thing to do is skip me and go right to the kids, teach them how to do what they need to do. And they they will always be better off if we get it right in the hands of the kids. And so um, my hope is that we can lean off the need for the parents to be leading the charge on that. But that doesn't mean that we won't, we won't support the parents in their quest to become more technologically savvy so that they can help their kids, but we need our kids to know. And and honestly, right now, I even ask, I mean, don't raise your hand if you ask your kids to support your technology needs at home. I mean, that's, that's the better way to go, but um, your your point is is a good one, India.
Is there any opportunity for any of the Career Center uh, students in IT to sort of get some help desk experience by assisting you and your staff, Matt? Or does that just take more of your time?
No, we've actually had that program for um, since the Career Center started, actually, Lyle is and is and actually even before that, before it was even a formal program. So we actually have an internship program with the Lyle's schools. We actually have two different levels of interns. Um, so we actually have five kids that are working with us over this um, summer. Um, most of, actually all five of those in some capacity or varying hours actually worked with us some throughout the year. So we we absolutely do. And and honestly, it's it's really a win win for for the students and um, professors as well to supplement our staff.
Yeah, that'd be great experience for the students.
And one more comment, um, I would tell you that Tara will be putting out a press release to the media tomorrow, but also notifying all of our families, because we think this is a point of celebration, and especially in such challenging times.
Super. All right, anything else before I go back to my shot back? Sorry, that was a bad joke. All right, um, then all those in favor of approving the um, purchase of the Chromebooks and the carts as outlined, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our items for this evening. Um, board, I would just remind you that we will be together on Thursday at four o'clock. We have our um, annual, our regularly scheduled review of the superintendent happening. And I wish all of you a pleasant good evening. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thanks, India, and a second, Astor. All right, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.